I call this meeting to order. The time is five thirty-five. This is a regular meeting of the Weslaco City Commission as required by law. The Office of the City Secretary properly posted a notice of the meeting. The day is Tuesday, March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and the purpose of this meeting is to discuss the agenda as prepared and presented. If during the course of this meeting, the discussion of any item on the agenda should be held in exec- executive or closed session, the City Commission will convene in such executive session in accordance with Section five-five-one dot zero-zero-one of Texas Government Code. At this time, there are six executive session items. It is a tradition of this commission to include it in its meeting, a prayer and a pledge of allegiance to our American flag. Tonight, we have, tonight, we are blessed, pleased to have Brother Juan Rosas from the Texas, the Church of Jesus Christ Latter Day Saints to lead us in our prayer time. And as he comes forward, I ask the audience to please stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, we are gathered here tonight to thank thee for all the blessings that we have in our lives. We're grateful for our Savior, Jesus Christ, and all that he has done for us and continues to do. We're grateful, Father, for all those who have fought for our privileges rights and freedoms in this beautiful country. We're grateful, Father, for the city of Weslaco Committee, and we're grateful for their willingness to serve the people in our communities. We ask thee, Father, that thy spirit might be here, that it might inspire us to do what's best for this community. We ask thee, Father, a blessing upon our officers, our firefighters, and other first responders, that they may be safe from any harm. We ask thee, Father, that we may be good, law-abiding citizens, that we may find opportunities to serve one another. We ask thee, Father, that we might be able to accept thy will. And we say these things in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On to the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Brother Rosas. We go on. Madam City Secretary, for the record, please conduct the roll call.
Mayor Gonzalez.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Farias. Commissioner Kerr. Commissioner Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Pedraza.
Here.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Commissioner Rodriguez. Mayor, let the record show at time of roll call, the absence of Mayor Pro Tem Farias, Commissioner Kerr, and Commissioner Rodriguez, and Aquaman is present.
Thank you. We'll move on to item E, mayor recognitions. Ms. Jasmine.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, city managers. My name is Jasmine Rico Jones. I'm the Public Relations Officer for the city of Weslaco. And tonight, we have three presentations. We'd like to begin with our presentation of the NAP Community Care Foundation check for Gibson Park, and we'd like to invite the FCC LA group up to the front to tell us a little bit more about it.
Good evening. I am Cora Ford.
I'm Nadine Carion.
And I'm Natalie Guerrero.
We are students of Weslaco High School and members of the Family Career and Community Leaders of America Student Organization. In two thousand and fifteen, Weslaco High School adopted Gibson Park. For the past nine years, Weslaco High School FCC LA has given back to Gibson Park with monthly cleanups and securing funding for park improvements. We are proud and honored to report that over two hundred sixty-one thousand dollars has been secured through Weslaco High School FCC LA to give back to Gibson Park and the city of Weslaco. Tonight, we have joining us are Ms. Christina Trejo Vasquez, CEO of NAP Community Care Foundation, and Ms. Mel Eskimia, Director of Grants and Programs, to present a check to the city of Weslaco for Gibson Park.
The money awarded through the foundation to Weslaco High will be used to resurface the basketball court at Gibson Park and purchase new goals. Weslaco High continues to give back to the community of Weslaco. We are excited to present a check for fourteen thousand two hundred dollars from the NAP Foundation to Weslaco High School to be used in Gibson Park. Thank you.
At this time, we'd like to invite the mayor and the commissioners to take a photo with the group. At this time, we'd like to invite the Chamber of Commerce, the Weslaco Chamber of Commerce, and our very special guest, Tex.
Tex.
To come on down, and I'm going to share a little bit about what's happening with him. So, we do have a second proclamation, first proclamation tonight, the Texas Onion Fest Festival for Weslaco, Texas. Whereas the Texas Onion Festival organized by the Weslaco Area Chamber of Commerce is a unique celebration of the development of the world Texas, world famous Texas ten-fifteen onion, which was developed in Weslaco. And whereas the Texas Onion Festival was founded in nineteen eighty-nine and celebrates over thirty-five years of exciting activities and family events in Weslaco. And whereas the Texas Onion Festival will take place downtown Weslaco on Texas Boulevard and Kansas Street, the Onion Fest event is free to the community, right, Tex? Yeah? And it'll open at ten AM on Saturday, March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. And whereas the Texas Onion Festival is a collaboration of many businesses, local citizens, and volunteers who come together to create a memorable event for their community. The event is funded through community support, charitable donations, and in-kind contributions. And whereas the Texas Onion Festival festivities includes live entertainment on multiple stages, the exciting onion-eating contest, delicious food, kiddie rides, performances by the famous dancing horses, a market, a car show, cooking demonstrations, and much, much more. And whereas the Weslaco Area Chamber of Commerce and Texas Onion Fest Committee, which is comprised of community, city, and local business volunteers, invite you to attend and experience the non-stop fun and exciting performances. Join us. Now, therefore, our mayor, Adrian Gonzalez, mayor of the city of Weslaco, along with the Weslaco City Commission, do hereby proclaim March twenty-third, this upcoming Saturday, as Texas Onion Festival Day throughout Weslaco, Texas. And he encourages the community to attend the two thousand and twenty-four Texas Onion Festival and support the efforts those involved in organizing the event have created and celebrate the creation of the world famous Texas ten-fifteen onion that was developed in our very own city.
As we get everybody situated here for a photo, we do want to remind the community that you are welcome to join us this Saturday. We have a great lineup of music, including David Ligarsa Los Musicales. We also have Jay Perez, the Delta Boys, and much more. This year, we've added three performance stages. So, we have a main stage, a family stage that includes local school district presentations and performances, as well as a new third stage that includes a cultural arts stage with storytelling and much more. So, we are so excited to present this event to you, celebrate the ten-fifteen onion that was developed right here in Weslaco. We want to remind everyone, we don't come out and celebrate the onion just for no reason. It's because it's something that we're proud of here in Weslaco that was developed here. We thank you, Commissioners, Mayor, everyone here, the organizers from our committee for your time, effort, and for assisting us in making this event possible for our community. This is the largest event hosted in Weslaco, Texas, and we're proud to bring it back here to our community and make it bigger and better than ever. So, thank you once again, and we look forward to seeing everybody on Saturday, March twenty-third. And we'll take a couple more photos here.
Now, take a bite. Just kidding. Awesome. Awesome. Thank you, guys. If we could have you stay for the second proclamation. We're going to have the city officials stay here because we have another very special proclamation. We would like to invite Coach Gabriel Valdez up and all of his group. Let me go ahead and read his proclamation. This is an incredible person you need to hear about. Whereas for over four decades, Gabriel Valdez, a resident of Weslaco, has been creating a basketball legacy in the Rio Grande Valley in our beloved Weslaco, Texas. And whereas Mr. Valdez was widely considered the best high school player in the valley in the mid nineteen eighties as he starred for the Weslaco High School Panthers, becoming team captain in nineteen eighty-seven, leading Weslaco High School to a thirty-one-two record and a district and by-district title, earning all-state recognition and winning every MVP award possible throughout his career. And whereas he earned a scholarship to play NCAA Division One basketball for the University of Texas Rio Grande Valley Legacy Institution Pan-American University, playing guard position, and was selected for the nineteen ninety-ninety-one All-American South Conference Third Team and received UTRGV's prestigious Lou Hassel Award, given to the most outstanding male athlete, and became an All-American South Conference Honoree by the end of his career. And whereas Gabriel Valdez still holds the UTRGV program record for career free-throw shooting percentage, making eighty-five point four percent of his free throws. And I thought that deserved a single line all on its own. And where was I? Whereas he was selected to play semi-pro basketball overseas and later called to lead boys' and girls' basketball programs in Weslaco ISD. And whereas he has guided his team to thirty-one winning seasons over his thirty-four coaching career, accumulating more than eight hundred wins as a head coach. And whereas Coach Valdez has fostered a culture of excellence at Weslaco ISD, consistently demonstrating dedication to the well-being and success of his players, nurturing their talents, and helping them reach their full potential through important values such as teamwork, respect, hard work, communication, resilience, discipline, adaptability, and leadership, among other important values. And whereas Coach Valdez is an inductee of two halls of fame, the RGV Sports Hall of Fame on July ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, and the upcoming UTRGV Hall of Fame on March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. Now, therefore, Mayor Adrian Gonzalez of the city of Weslaco, along with the Weslaco City Commission, do hereby proclaim March nineteenth today as Coach Gabriel Valdez Day.
You're shying away from a picture? No!
Stay right here. Stay right here. Stay right here. Ready? We're going to do like a cheer, okay? I hope you got the cheer, Coach Valdez.
A wizard.
We're going to do a little bit of a video. Ready? One, two, three. Here we go.
Before you guys leave, real quick, I just want to say something about Coach Valdez. You know, first, you know, I want to just say congratulations to Coach Valdez, and he's been, he's been a mentor in my life since I was in eighth grade. You know, he was one of my coaches. And he, you know, when times were tough, I remember going to him and him kind of telling me like, now, hey, you got to give it your one-hundred percent. And I was like, you know, but it's, it's hard. And, and he always gave me words of encouragement. I mean, this, this man here has a huge heart, and he cares about his kids and his coaching staff and everybody involved. Coach, it's, man, it's awesome what you've done and the, the many lives that you touch, because I was one of those. And all the staff that always say, man, you know, Mayor, you're so active, and you're, you're always going to blame him. Because he's always pushed me, he was, he always told me, if you're going to do something, do it right. So, Coach Valdez, I love you, man, and, and thank you for everything that you do, and continue doing what you're doing. We'll go on. We're going to go and to reports, but we're going to start off with item C, the expansion renovation of the south water wastewater treatment plant. Yeah, they need to leave on reports.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight's report is mainly regarding the south wastewater treatment plant and the proposed improvements that are, that we're proposing out there. First of all, that, that plant was started back in two thousand, two thousand and one. And so, up to this point, we're got, we've got about twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four years in, into its service life, and it's pretty much outlived its useful service term. We got two things that are looking, we're looking at. First is, a lot of the equipment there needs to be rehabilitated. And secondly, in accordance with the TCEQ and the requirements, we have to begin planning for its expansion and rehabilitation. And so, to that end, we've engaged Orlando, I mean, Cruz-Hogan and Associates to help us out and develop a plan that we can look for in, in rehabilitating and, and of course, reconstructing the, the plant. We had a funding program that opened up, and the applications were due with the Texas Water Development under the Clean Water Act. And this, we had a deadline on March first. And that deadline came, and Mr. Cruz and his staff were able to help us out with an application, and it's already been submitted. And we submitted an application for improvements worth up to thirty-two million dollars. And I have Mr. Cruz here that he's going to be able to tell you a little bit about the, the proposed improvements under the Water Development Board Clean Water Act that we submitted recently.
Mayor, City Commission, city staff. For the record, my name is Orlando Cruz, Principal Engineer for the firm of Cruz-Hogan Consultants with an office here in Weslaco. As we recall, back in December, our firm was selected to look at the south wastewater treatment plant to see what it needed as far as improvements and expansion. So, over the last few months, we've done an extensive review and evaluation of the plant to include both the condition of the existing plant and the need to expand the existing plant. With that, we developed a plan. We looked at different scenarios, different alternates. I came up with the best plan that we feel that we could go to the Water Development Board for funding under the Clean Water State Revolving Funds. Of course, that would do, like Albert said, that would do March first. Actually, we submitted the application on February twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth. So, we're, we wanted to be a day ahead of schedule. So, this is a project that requires a lot of information. And I was telling Albert, with, with the city's permission, we like to make a presentation, a detailed presentation, maybe in a workshop setting, where we bring our boards and we bring our pamphlets and we bring them pictures, to bring the commission to what the existing condition of that plant is. And there's a lot of equipment that's outlived its useful life that needs to be replaced. But with that, you know, the community is also growing. There are several thousand lots that have been developed that will impact this, this wastewater treatment plant. So, it needs to be expanded. At the same time, it needs to be renovated. But quick, briefly, you know, we, we'd like to make this a presentation at a later date with, with the city's permission and, and get with the commission and bring them to date and evaluate, review our evaluations on how we came up with the costs.
Yeah, so, just to recap, the, the application was submitted March first, and we are anticipating that by the end of, by early fall, we should be able to receive the rankings and the scorings of all the projects statewide under the Clean Water Act. And so, hopefully, after that, we'll be ranked well, and we'll be invited to apply for the funding that we're, we're seeking. So, we look forward to that, to that, to this fall.
Yeah, no, I know, I know it takes a lot of work, and I know there's a lot, it takes some time to do a full presentation. And yes, we, we more than happy to get a workshop going so we can break everything down and what's needed and all that stuff.
Because the commission needs to be fully aware of what, how things were developed and what, how things cost and where we're moving forward to get it funded, you know?
Yes, sir. And of, and of course, we, you know, we want to be, you know, updated. And, and again, that's probably will be part of the plan to give us updates, you know, where, where we're at and with the process of all this information that we need and make sure that we turn in on time and that you're fully, you have everything that you need to make sure that we submit everything on time and that, you know, we get these funds.
Right, right.
But, so, thank you, sir.
Any questions? I'm good.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We just look forward to the workshop.
We'll go ahead and go back to item A, infomark.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Garza, Mr. Munoz. Start with the flow at the water treatment plant. Five point seven million gallons per day for the month of February. The plant operated at forty-four percent of its capacity for the month of February. The north wastewater treatment plant had a two point three million gallons per day for the month of February, and it operated at forty-six percent of its capacity. The south plant had a flow of one point six million gallons per day for the month in February, and it operated at sixty-seven percent of its capacity. This slide here, I'll be working with Jasmine. It's more of awareness to the community of how the treatment steps of the water are, are taken from its original source, the water source, as it goes through the treatment process and then out to the community. It's just an awareness for the, the community, anyone who, who's ever wondered, how does it get treated? How does it get cleaned? What is the process? I think this is, it'd be good to be put on the, on the website. The station plant, pump deragging and cleaning of the floats continues throughout the system. And I'm also working with Jasmine to put up a flyer on the, on the website, maybe bringing awareness of the, the rag situation that we have out in the system. Instead of flushing it, let's put it in a trash can. You know, it helps promote equipment failure from happening and clean water going out of the facilities for aquatic life that is useful or recycle, in this case, at the, at the south plant that we provide the water there for the golf course. So, I think it'd be a, a good flyer to put on the website for awareness. List, list station call-outs for the month of February are listed here. A lot of them are for pump deragging and cleaning the floats to ensure that the pumps are getting the signals that they need to turn on and off. Couple of these are that we assisted the city while they were working on, on removing a plug from the collection line. So, we were out there helping out by monitoring the list stations and turning on and off the pumps when they needed it, on and off. Capital repairs, list station seventeen, we're still awaiting the arrival of the pump there. But list station forty-two has been completed. We received that pump already. Rotor repair was completed at the south plant, and the belt for the belt press VFD has been completed also, has been installed. Update on the generator transfer switches. We have already had a contractor go out and, and assess the, the transfer switches. So, we are now waiting for his proposal on, on the cost of the repair, what it would take to, to get these transfer switches going. And as soon as those come in, I will present them for review to Mr. Garza. Pr- you question someone by report?
No, I'm, I'll just, real quick, we're still, you know, with all this water that's going on and the shortages of water and stuff, are you guys staying on top of everything that we need and everything that, you know, any laws or rules or anything pops up?
Yeah, yes, sir. We, we stay informed pretty much with the state requirements. And our, our compliance team for the company, they, they stay on top of that, letting us know, y'all need to be looking at this, y'all need to be looking at that. So, yes, we are on top of that, sir.
Alrighty. Thank you, George. We'll move on to B, animal care services. Where's Charlie?
The mayor's already missing him.
I already did.
Yeah, I'll hold it.
I already did.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, and city managers. For February two thousand and twenty-four, our live release rate for dogs was seventy-five percent, and our live release rate for cats was a hundred percent, giving us an overall of seventy-seven percent. Here's the graph. How we've been progressing. And again, this is, I think we're at eight months already at being a hundred percent live release rate for cats, which is fantastic. Our cats move great into adoptions and stuff. We did three new partnerships in the last month with Compassion for Canines Transport, the Broken Sprocket out of Bronzeville, and with Tractor Supply as well. So, we had our very first event in Cameron County by Bronzeville, and it turned out pretty fantastic. We had four dogs find their forever home. We had four dogs find their forever homes. You can see some pictured there. And then we had a, we assisted in the Sombrero Costume Contest, five beautiful puppies, I'm sorry, that found their forever homes. And as always, we collaborate with a lot of rescues to move a lot of dogs out of the valley. On March fourth, we had a officer embark a transport with twelve dogs, two cats, to three rivers, to two different rescues, and that helped us move. There was several medical cases on that transport, one including a cat that Austin Pets Alive took in, so, and a very matted poodle that we also sent out. We also, our new partnership with Compassions, Compassion for Canines is a new transport company that has come to the valley to help a lot of animals get moved out. They helped us in transporting thirteen newborn kittens and one mama cat up to Austin Pets Alive to their nursery, and we couldn't have gotten them up there without them. And we're super grateful to have them as a partnership. On March tenth, we transported sixteen dogs to TPR, which is Tracy's Paws Rescue, up to Three Rivers. We met her halfway. And sixteen amazing dogs found their way to Tracy, and now they're getting ready to get rescued. And I think some of these are already adopted, if I'm not mistaken. So here are, I don't know if you saw the one before, these are their before pictures, and this is how they look now at, at TPR. So they're, they're looking fantastic. We also did our very first PetSmart event at Harlingen. We have never had an event in that store, and lucky for us, we adopted four dogs out to four beautiful homes out, out there. And pictured, you see one puppy and then a very special case that we had, which is coming up, which is Mrs. Grumps. You wouldn't believe if I told you that this dog was the grumpiest dog. I couldn't go into her kennel, I couldn't step into her kennel, she wouldn't allow me to. I did have to use a catchboard to be able to move her out. Her file said that she was, loved car rides, according to the ACO that picked her up. So me and ACO Silva, as we do, we took her into our patrol unit and we took her for a ride. And now she is living her best life with her little human, going to baseball games, you know, cheering her on. So she is a sweetheart. We, I became best friends with, with the, with the parents. So they, they send me pictures all the time about the dog. She rides in that little wagon with a fan and everything, living the best life. It's the best. We also have a couple of upcoming events this week. We have an event tomorrow with PetSmart in Harlingen. We have an event on Friday at PetSmart in McAllen. And then on Saturday, we have the, the team splitting up. We have Onion Fest, and then we have PetSmart in Donna. And then on Sunday, we have PetSmart in Harlingen again. So this week is National Adoption Week. So our goal is to do thirty dogs, due to PetSmart is thirty years in service for helping the communities finding homes. So our goal is to commemorate that with thirty dogs to, for every year that PetSmart has helped dogs in the, in the valley and around the nation. We also have an event on March thirtieth at Petco and as well as Tractor Supply. So our team is very, very busy doing adoptions this week and next week. So wishes luck. Any questions?
No, it's just, thank you for what you guys do. And so I see Harlingen a lot. So you all partnering up with the city of Harlingen and working together or?
With PetSmart. We have reached out to the city of Harlingen if they ever want to do adoptions together. It's in the works, they're still trying to figure out their, their system.
Yeah, I know that's.
So, yeah, I, we offered the help and we're just waiting for them to be at that level where they're ready. And once they are, we'll, we'll show them the way.
Yeah, I know that Mayor Sepula, Mayor, Mayor Sepula from Harlingen is great. And, yeah, if you guys can help, help them out with anything.
Yeah, I think the day that they opened, we stopped by with a couple of donations from our end, from our shelter, and we gave them some dog toys and some dog food and, and something to, to help them out for the puppies and stuff and gave them some advice of, of like rescues and adoptions and stuff, that anything that we can help to help them be better, of course, we're going to be there to help them.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you.
He wants to know when he can take him home.
Right now?
We'll move on to public hearing.
Before we move to public hearing, Mayor, we have no public comments for the record.
Oh, okay.
Public hearing. A, to solicit input on behalf of Judith Quea to approve a conditional use permit to obtain an on-premise wine and beer retailer's permit at six eleven South Texas Boulevard, also being lot nineteen and south of lot twenty, block forty-nine, Wesco Regional Townsite, Wesco, Adele County, Texas. B, to solicit and put on behalf of Amber Sanchez to approve a conditional use permit to operate an event center at five eighty-eight South Texas Boulevard, Suite B, also being lot twenty-one through twenty-four, block forty-one, Wesco Regional Townsite, Wesco, Adele County, Texas.
Make a motion to open public hearing?
Second.
I have a motion to open public hearings by Commissioner Pedraza and a second by Commissioner Lopez. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Okay. So there's anybody here that wants to speak? Give you some time. Yes. Up here.
Good evening, my name is Amber Sanchez. I'm the one requesting a conditional use permit for the event center. I would just like to open something for children. I see a lot of, like, for baby showers, weddings, and I go every Wednesday or Thursday to Al Fresco, and I never see anything for kids. And I would love to have something for my children, for the children of Weslaco, and that's the reason why I'm asking for the conditional use permit.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. There's no one else to speak for or against? I'll make a motion to close public hearing? I have a motion by Commissioner Pedraza and a second by Commissioner Lopez to close public hearing. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We move on to consent agenda. Do I have anybody here that wants to pull something out of consent for discussion? I'll start with Commissioner Lopez.
No, I'm fine.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
I'm good, sorry.
Commissioner Pedraza?
I am good.
All right, do I have a motion to pass consent agenda?
So move. Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Gonzalez and a second by Commissioner Lopez to approve consent agenda. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. We move on to new business, item A.
Item A, discussion consideration after public hearing on behalf of Judith Quea to obtain an on-premise wine and beer retailer's permit at six eleven South Texas Boulevard, also being lot nineteen and south of lot twenty, block forty-nine, Wesco Regional Townsite, Wesco, Adele County, Texas, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
Notice appearing on the monitor on February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. We notified nineteen property owners within a two-hundred-foot radius and have not received any petitions for or against. This is the site of the existing Juan Boatas, they're just changing ownership, so staff is recommending approval and so is P and Z.
So move.
Sir?
I have a motion by Commissioner Pedraza and a second by Commissioner Gonzalez to approve item A as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Move on to item B.
Item B, discussion consideration after public hearing on behalf of Amber Sanchez to approve a conditional use permit to operate an event center at five eighty-eight South Texas Boulevard, Suite B, also being lot twenty-one through twenty-four, block forty-one, Wesco Regional Townsite, Wesco, Adele County, Texas, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
Notice appearing on the monitor on February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. We notified twenty-three property owners within a two-hundred-foot radius and have not received any petitions for or against. This is just going to be for small events, children's events, so staff and P and Z are recommending approval of this item.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pedraza and a second by Commissioner Lopez to approve item B as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Good luck, Mrs. Sanchez. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
We'll move on to item C.
Item C, discussion consideration on the request for a six-month extension for the final plat for Plaza de Paz being a thirty, a three-point-zero-zero acre out of lot thirteen, block one thirty-seven, West Track subdivision, Wesco, Adele County, Texas, located at fourteen oh six West Pike Boulevard, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
This is proposed two-lot subdivision located inside our West Coast city limits. This is a six-month extension for a final plat that's set to approve, sorry, expire on March third, twenty twenty-four. This is their second extension. This project has not started, so P and Z is recommending denial and the fact that this is now their second extension, it's been a year and a half and there has no been, progress been made. The owner was having issues securing financing. I know that his financing is set to come in in July, and he should be finishing the project shortly after because there's not much infrastructure to do.
Yeah, he reached out to me and asked if we could, you know, that he was having other issues and if we can give him that six-month extension. And we did explain to him that it needed to be done by?
August.
August.
Yes.
Okay.
Was this the one that was expired in September?
No, that was the coves. You guys approved that under consent.
So, yeah. But, yeah, we, and then we, you spoke to him today as well, right, ma'am?
Correct. And he said that once financing came through, he should be done by August, so we shouldn't have to entertain another extension.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Lopez, second by Commissioner Farias to approve and give the exception as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. We move on to item D.
Item D, discussion consideration to approve the final plat for Bridge Heights subdivision being twelve-point-one-thirty-seven acres out of Farm Track seven ninety-nine, West Track subdivision, Wesco, Adele County, Texas, located approximately seven hundred and sixty-five feet south along east, mile five and a half north and north of mile five north road, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
This is proposed twenty-nine lot subdivision currently located outside our West Coast city limits. It's going to be supplied water by the city of Wesco through an eight-inch water line and sanitary sewer through an eight-inch sanitary sewer line. They are not requesting any variances at this time. P and Z and staff are recommending approval of the final plat.
So a motion?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Farias and a second by Commissioner Gonzalez to approve item D as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Move on to item E.
Item E, discussion consideration to approve the final plat for Real Stone subdivision, phase two, being fourteen-point-nineteen acres out of Farm Tracks six forty-eight and six forty-nine, West Track subdivision, Wesco, Adele County, Texas, located approximately ten fifty-five feet south of mile six and a half north along the west side of South Milanos Road, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
This is a proposed sixty-four lot subdivision located inside our West Coast city limits. This being supplied water by the North Almo through an eight-inch water line and sanitary sewer by city of Wesco through an eight-inch sanitary sewer line. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow for off-site drainage and has provided their letters of support from the irrigation district and the drainage district, sorry. Staff and P and Z are recommending approval of the final plat.
And all these have been, all these that are here, they're, they were started before the moratorium.
Yes, sir, all these came in before the moratorium.
Alright.
Where's this exactly?
This, so this is Milanos and six and a half.
Okay.
It's, this?
Yeah, south.
Oh, south, this way?
Yeah.
Alright, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Lopez and a, a motion by Commissioner Lopez, a second by Commissioner Farias to approve item E as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. We move on to item F.
Item F, discussion consideration to approve the final plat for two-point subdivision being two-point-thirty-two acres out of lot nine, block one seventy-four, Western Adams Track subdivision, Wesco, Adele County, Texas, located on the southwest corner of the mile four west road and mile twelve and a half road, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
This is proposed two-lot subdivision located outside our West Coast city limits. It's going to have water supply by North Almo through a two-inch water line, and they are proposing sanitary sewer through OSSF. The nearest sanitary sewer line is about two and a half miles south of them, so it's, it's not plausible to connect to that at this time. So they are asking for a variance on that. Staff and P and Z are recommending approval of the final plat.
This is outside the city limit?
Way outside, yeah.
Why is it coming to us?
ETJ, it's in our extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Okay. Alright, do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pedraza, a motion, a second by Commissioner Lopez to approve item F as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Item G.
Item G, discussion and reconsideration for the final plat with a variance request for Victoria subdivision being forty-two-point-eighteen acre out of Farm Track one sixty-five and one sixty-six, West Track subdivision, Wesco, Adele County, Texas, located on the southeast corner of Midway and Interstate Two, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
So Victoria was previously approved by City Commission on June twentieth, twenty twenty-three. The applicant is requesting now a variance to allow for a fifteen-foot front setback, but only for four lots. It's kind of hard to see on the plat, but there was a gas easement that Texas Gas did not know they have, and when they were doing construction, lo and behold, they found it. Now they have to dedicate a thirty-foot wide easement, which made some of the lots a little unusable. So they had to redraw some lots, shift some streets, and this is just to allow for them to continue to, to keep moving forward. Staff and P and Z are recommending approval of the final plat.
This is the mean that we had, right, Mr. Garza?
Yes, sir.
Is that with the variance, Rebecca?
Yes, that would be with the variance. It's only affecting four lots, just to give them the, the usable space they need with that easement that's running through them.
That's correct.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Gonzalez and a second by Commissioner Farias to approve item G as approved, as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Move on to item H.
Item H, discussion and consideration to authorize that Wesco Police Department to conduct a weapon equipment trade, trade-in in the amount of thirty-four thousand four hundred and twenty in credit with CTC Gunworks LLC and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager. These, G and H are related. We were, we, I am planning to transition over to a different weapons system. Weapon systems for police are done once a generation. It's time for us to transition into a new weapons system. And so this is us asking for your permission to be able to trade our current weapons systems in for credit in the amount of, as, as specified in the, in the agenda.
It's H and I, right?
H and I, yeah. I'm sorry, yes, yes, H and I. I'm sorry, my mistake. And so one of the things that Purchasing asked me to make sure is to stipulate for the record that OMNI Partners Contract Number twelve dash nineteen will be used. It's a cooperative, it's a purchasing cooperative.
Okay. And that was going to be my question is whether to cooperate, did you go out to bid or did you just, how did this company come about it, you?
It's a, it's a purchasing cooperative. And so in general, we chose the Sig Sauer weapon system to go to, and Sig Sauer has master dealers that they designate throughout the country. CTC was their master dealer, and so they give their master dealers the best pricing of all firearms dealers. And so whether I go with CTC or Sig Sauer directly, it's the same price, which Sig Sauer is the manufacturer. So out of an abundance of caution, they do have a, a purchasing cooperative. So even if I go out for bids, it's going to come back as the same number because contractually Sig holds that number per weapon, to be true, and, and they won't allow their dealers to deviate from the lowest price, which is allowed to the master dealers.
Alright, do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Farias and a second by Commissioner Lopez to approve item H as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Do I have a motion for item I?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Farias and a second by Commissioner Lopez to approve item I as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. We'll move on to item J.
Item J, discussion consideration on the presentation of the twenty-twenty-three racial profiling report submitted by the Wesco Police Department to the state of Texas and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
Chief on this one? I mean, we kind of looked over it, but if the commission has any questions for the chief?
This is a non-action item and is essentially a record, a report that's required by law for me to submit to the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. Nothing out of it is abnormal or in, or statistically different or statistically significant changes to the regular report. Our demographics are pretty stable. So there's no action on this. I'll take any questions? So there's no action on this. I'll take any questions if you, if you have.
And just, just, uh, if you can remind me or give me a call about, uh, that Senate bill that passed, if you can give me some information on all that.
I will, I will give you a briefing as I get it tomorrow.
Yeah, and if you can maybe relate it back to the commission as well.
Yes, sir, I'll do it.
Thank you. So we'll move to item K.
Item K, discussion consideration on an interlocal agreement between the City of Wesaco and the rear Grande Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization represented by the low rear Grande Valley Development Council for a cost participation from the city not to exceed thirty-one thousand two hundred and fifty for the engagement of a consultant to conduct a corridor study for the Southwest Loop Project. And authorize mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
And I guess this is the, this, this is what, Mr. Garcia, this is the conversations we had with Jacinto and Commissioner Fuentes about the loop that we, that we want to work on?
That's correct, sir. This is the Southwest Loop Project, and, uh, as you mentioned, Mayor, uh, the mayor and I, uh, have been meeting with Commissioner, uh, David Fuentes regarding different transportation projects, this being one. This is an interlocal agreement between the RGV MPO, um, precinct one, County of Hidalgo, and the city of Wesaco, and this is to conduct a study on the southwest corridor that we are proposing. Um, this study will cost a total of sixty-two thousand five hundred. This is a contribution for the, the city of Wesaco for thirty-one thousand two hundred and fifty, which is fifty percent of the cost, uh, which we're splitting with the precinct. Uh, so the scope of work for this is, is as, uh, an assessment of, of the existing transportation infrastructure, traffic patterns, land use considerations, potential improvements, and any future transportation needs within the Southwest Loop area of Wesaco. And, um, the comprehensive report will detail findings, recommendations, and potential strategies for enhancing transportation within that study area. So the Southwest Loop really is to help us with the congestion, uh, between ten fifteen and West Gate on the south side following the corridor of mile five. So that's more or less the, uh, the area that, uh, we're looking at in a potential, um, loop for the city of Wesaco. And so this is the beginning of the study. Um, this approval of the interlocal agreement will authorize me to issue out a check so we can move forward with the process.
All right, yeah, and I, and I know that these, these projects take time, you know, and we want to make sure that we get involved and, and look towards the next ten, fifteen, fifteen years from now. And, uh, so this is something really positive for the city of Wesaco.
Right, at, at the end, Mayor, what we're trying to do is, is, is get shovel ready for this project, right? And one of the things, uh, to do is to have other studies in place. Uh, this is also one of the projects that we approached, um, Congressman, um, Gonzalez regarding the earmarked, uh, monies that are out there. So this is one of several projects that were introduced to him as well, so hopefully we can get some funding as well.
All right, do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lopez and a second by Commissioner Farias to approve item K as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. We move on to item L.
Item L, discussion and possible action on Senate Bill eleven forty-five regarding childcare exemptions and authorize mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
I know Mr. Garcia is passing out, uh, a form that we can look at. Um,
That's correct.
That's going to show us the breakdown of all the, all the daycares, the child daycares, and who meets the requirements and, um.
So, if I may, Mayor, this is a, a new law that came in, Senate Bill eleven forty-five. And what it is, um, it is a tax exemption for the accessibility for childcare facilities. And so this is really promoting and, and, and helping, uh, you know, the access to affordable and quality childcare for our community. That's really what the promotion is. And at the same time, it allows us to have and promote more facilities so we can get people to go out and work and, and be productive citizens and, and contribute to our US economy. Uh, so this new law came in, and what it is, is a tax exemption. And the law basically says that, um, any government agency, uh, in this case, the city of Wesaco, uh, has the ability to be able to provide a, a format. In this case, it would be a, um, an ordinance, uh, to be able to facilitate tax breaks to the operators of childcare facilities. There's a couple of things that you need to, uh, be a part of. Number one is you have to be part of the Texas Workforce Commission's Texas Rising Star Program. So the childcare has to be involved with that, uh, specific program. And also, the child daycares have to be, at least twenty percent of their total number of children have to be enrolled at the facility, at the facility receiving subsidized childcare services. And these are services, um, that are programs that are administered by the Texas Workforce Commission. So the way it works is that, um, if you own the property, uh, where the daycare is situated at, the property owner can apply for a tax break of up to minimum of fifty percent. And so, uh, what we have here today is a list of the daycares that we have in the city of Wesaco. There's a total of, uh, there's a total of thirty, but actually twenty-eight. Two of them are already exempt because they're churches and they don't pay taxes. But there's a total of twenty-eight child daycares within our city limits. Out of those twenty-eight, the ones highlighted in green, uh, there's twelve of them that are already participating in the, um, in the qualification of, of being part of the Texas Rising Star Program. So those twelve will, will qualify as long as twenty percent of their, uh, students, right, uh, that attend are, are also receiving some sort of subsidy from, from another organization. So if we, uh, look into this and come up with an ordinance, then any, uh, owner can take this to the appraisal district and be able to apply for that ta- uh, tax exemption. If the owner of the facility is not the owner of the land or the owner of the property, then the property owner has to give that reduction of the tax break on the same equal amount to the person who actually owns the daycare and be able to prove that, for example, if, if I'm, if I have a tax break of a thousand dollars a year, the, the owner of the, of the property needs to be able to reduce the rent of the facility
By whatever the tax break is.
Which is about, you know, the thousand dollars and be able to submit that proof to the, uh, appraisal district with, uh, the chief appraiser, Rolando Arasa, to be able to receive this exemption. What we're asking here today is for us to have a discussion on the exemption that is, um, a possibility of a minimum of fifty percent. And if you look at, uh, the site notes that we have there on the right, uh, and this is coming from our finance department, out of those twenty-eight acres, we collect approximately forty-five thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty-one cents. That's what we collected this past year in, um, average tax value levied on these properties. So if we look at the fifty percent, which is, um, the minimum that we can, um, uh, provide, uh, this tax exemption is a total of twenty-two thousand six hundred and six dollars and sixty-five cents. That is what we, what the impact would be to our general fund.
And that's what we're saving them.
Exactly.
All right, is this, is this the forty-four thousand, forty-five thousand, this is for all thirty of these, or are you looking at just the ones that are highlighted in green?
For the twenty-eight, for the twenty-eight of them, the ones that are highlighted in, actually the ones, all of them with the exceptions of the highlights, um, let's call it a red. Because those two don't pro- uh, pay any taxes because they're actually part of a, of a church facility that has a cha- a child daycare in there. But if you look at all the other ones, total of twenty-eight, that's the forty-five thousand. So out of the twenty-eight thousand, or the twenty-eight, um, child daycares, we're collecting forty-five thousand two hundred and thirteen.
Uh, but even then, you only have twelve that are participating.
Right now, yes, sir. Now, I think this is going to incentivize child daycares to be able to participate in this type of programs, right? So, I mean, we're, we're going to see a little bit of difference there. But at the moment, um, if you look at the full amount, it's a total of forty-five thousand and, and fifty percent of that would be the twenty-two.
So initially, it would be less than twenty-two.
Yes.
All right, and is this grandfather just to these twenty-eight, or let's say Adrian opens up a?
Actually, Commissioner, this is a brand-new law.
I, I know it got passed this past year.
Would be one of the first cities in the state to do this. What you would do is you can give them a minimum of fifty percent off, and then they have to apply to the appraisal district. Doesn't mean everybody's going to apply, okay? Those that do qualify in the appraisal district is in charge of seeing who does and doesn't qualify and how much of an exemption they get. But, uh, this, this would be the first in its statement, and really cutting-edge by the commission. Got to commend the commission for doing something like this. But, uh, you can give them fifty, or you can even give them more if you want. When you vote on this today, you authorize staff to prepare an ordinance, uh, setting forth whatever exemption you want to give them. And once you do that and the ordinance is, is accepted, then we hand it all over to the appraisal district and they're in charge of doing all that. But none of these are, are exempt at this point.
No, 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 but if it's a new company, could a new company come in?
Yeah, they, they apply as well.
If they meet the criteria.
Yes.
All right.
If they meet the criteria, they'll be, they'll be able to qualify for the funds.
And this, this is something huge, you know, for the city of Wesaco, you know, again, it was, we, we went to the voters and they voted for this, and, uh, it'd be huge for us to be the first ones, you know, we, you know, we're going to take the lead. Um, and we're helping small businesses, s- small businesses and at the same time, help our, our future generation and our kids, you know? So I think this is huge for the city of Wesaco.
It's supposed to promote affordable daycare, sir, so it, it allows people to, to be able to, um, you know, provide that or afford that daycare and be able to go out and work as well. So it, it helps the economy in general, right?
It helps in general, and, and, uh, it's like Mr. Gonzalez said, we'll be the first in the state of Texas to do this.
So, so, the only other cities looking at this are Denton, Dallas, San Antonio, and I don't think they've gotten to the ordinance stage, have they?
No.
Well, it's going to be the city of Wesaco.
You know, I think it's a win-win for everyone, but, uh, I know a lot of daycares are, are also struggling since, uh, you know, school districts are now offering, uh, uh, pre-K three, you know, that takes a lot of their clientele, so. Um, I think any way that you can, and then, and again, it just goes back to small businesses and, you know, uh, wanting to see them thrive, and I think this would be, you know, it, it, it's not a whole lot when you look at it, when you think about it, but it's something, man, something's better than nothing, so.
So move.
I got a, I got a motion by Commissioner Farias and a second by Commissioner Pedraza to approve item L as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. This is huge, guys, this is huge, so, thank you, guys. Item M.
Mayor, for the record, before I read item M, the word denied should be suspended. I'm going to read it with the word suspended. Uh, item N, discussion consideration to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty-two finding that AEP Texas Central Company's application to increase system-wide distribution and transmission rates within the city should be suspended. Finding that the city's reasonable rate case expenses shall be reimbursed by the company and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, fossil action.
Yes, Mayor, in this case, we're asking for the suspension of this, uh, and only to give us authorization for the city to participate in a coalition, uh, with the rest of the cities, uh, served by AEP in, uh, Texas cities in order to, uh, be more efficiently representative, um, by the interest of the city and the citizens and authorize the hiring of Lloyd Gosling and consultants to review the filing, negotiate with the company, and make recommendations to the city regarding the increased rate. So we're just asking for us to, uh, go ahead and suspend that and give us authorization to participate with the rest of the cities in a coalition.
So we do yearly, right?
Yes, we do this yearly, and this is, uh, the advantage to this is that, you know, numbers speak volume, right? And so when a coalition gets together, the cities, the, you know, they're, they're heard, they're represented by one single attorney, um, um, firm, and they're basically, uh, looking for the interest of, of the cities and hopefully get better rates than what we're being presenting at the moment.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pedraza and a second by Commissioner Lopez to approve item M as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Let's move on to item N.
Item N, discussion consideration to solicit engineering services to update the city's water conservation and drought contingency study and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
Mr. Andrew.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. The last time we drafted this, our, uh, document was back in two thousand and nine. So, uh, Infomark has been doing the five-year increments requirements for TCUQ for our reporting. But our information, our demographics, our response to drought contingency plans no longer meet the watermaster's requirements. Or so what we want to do is we want to update our plan, uh, to meet our current demographics, our infrastructure needs, as well as meet the watermaster's demands, so we're wanting, uh, issue SOQs for this process. Staff recommends approval.
All right, this is something that's, we really need, Mr. Andrew, and, um, we need to make sure that we're on top of this as well.
Yes, sir.
As, as, you know, and however we decide on this issue, we need to make sure that it goes out and that we get these things moving fast, you know? Um, I don't want to wait a month or two months for it to go out or anything like that. Let's move on it right away, please.
Yes, sir, we'll publish it in the next, uh, uh, newspaper.
Mayor, do you want to select a member of the commission to be part of the, um, committee? Do you want to do that today, or?
Yeah, well, does anyone, we don't, want to be a part of it? Commissioner Lopez?
Yeah, I'll go ahead, Mr.
Okay, we'll put Commissioner Lopez on that.
Okay, Commissioner Lopez, and, uh, we'll put a group from staff, uh, with some directors involved in that. Thank you.
All right, do I have a motion?
So move. Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Farias and a second by Commissioner Gonzalez to approve item N as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 All against, motion passes. We move on to item O.
Item O, discussion and consideration to solicit professional services for the appraisal of airport land and facilities and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Um, thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. As part of the airport, uh, master plan, we are revising and updating the ground and facility lease agreements. As part of the pro- as part of the process, we are requesting appraisal services to best determine fair market value. Um, with us tonight, we have Dan Benson and John DeCoster, Coster, whom are the authors of the SOQ and are here to answer any questions anyone may have regarding the appraisal.
Andrew, I think this is something that we had discussed already, right? You know, I know we had a discussion, or?
Correct, as part of the airport master plan, this is something that we're moving from on the lease agreements. Right now, what we have are just terminal, uh, facility land, land, terminal agreements. What we're looking to now is move into aeronautical, non-aeronautical, as well as fa- facility and land leases. And part of doing that is we have to look at the actual usable space per tenant, the use of the space per tenant, and the square footage. The best way to do that is to determine the fair market value, so we want to do appraisals on each one. So that way, moving forward, we know exactly what the appraised price is, rather than trying to determine based on the improvements and negotiating between twenty-seven cents to thirty-two cents. We'll already have the appraisal set on that piece of property, so if the ownership changes, they already know what they're getting into with the city commission and what our rental rates will be for that particular improvement. So this is what, uh, will get us the, the appraiser on board to help us establish what those rates will be.
And how long is this process?
That typically takes us about, how long?
It takes a couple of months.
Couple of months?
All right. Well, thank you, gentlemen, for being here.
So move.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pedraza and, uh, second by Commissioner Lopez to approve item O as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. We move on to item P.
Item P, discussion and consideration to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash ten, repealing ordinance eighty-six dash eleven and adopting the Mid Valley rules and standards for the Wesco Mid Valley Airport and authorize the mayor to execute any, any related documents. First reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash ten, possible action.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Mid Valley Airport is replacing the rules and regulations from nineteen eighty-six to meet FAA minimum standards, standards and guidelines. Again, tonight, we have with us Dan Benson and John DeCoster, whom are the authors to answer any questions, anyone regarding the rules, regulations, and standards.
Correct, as, uh, as what we're, as another part of our, um, airport master plan is we're looking at our lease agreements. We're also looking at our rules and regulations and replacing those with updated, uh, rules and standards to meet the minimum standards required by FAA. Um, Dan and John are the authors of this document. They've looked at our leases, they've drafted our leases and have looked at the aeronautical use, non-aeronautical use. They've researched our airport from beginning to end, top to bottom, inside and out. They were the authors of this document. We've already forwarded those to the attorney for review. Um, so if you have any Um, so if you have any questions regarding those, especially with the current litigation that we may have, we've addressed those issues as well. We looked at other types of use for the airport, future uses for the airport, things that we want to be able to do, and but like in our five-year plan to move to a sleepy hollowed general aviation airport to becoming a part one thirty-nine participant, which is playing with the big boys and in the airport world. This is the first step in that process to get us there. So we went out and we got some of the best gentlemen in, in the country to help us, uh, get us to the, to those, uh, air marks, uh, those marks and those requirements, so that way we can avoid future problems in the future with the activity that we have at the airport and as fast as we're growing. So we took all of that and anticipated it, I think, the best we could, uh, with establishing with these rules and standards at this point. And so we're asking for you to approve those tonight. Um, any, any changes, we'll come back, because we're gonna post these on our website, we're gonna give these to our tenants for them to review. We did present to the advisory board, it passed unanimously with no questions. Our advisory board did review, they did sit down via committee. And we also sat down as the PAC committee on the airport master plan, we discussed this as well. So it's been out there for several months. Uh, we have yet to have any negative feedback or any feedback from our tenants. Our advisory board all passed the item unanimously, so for right now, we're asking for your approval, uh, on this item.
And I know, and on discussions that we've been having, it's very important because we have big plans for our airport in the future. And I know Commissioner Pedraza, I believe Commissioner Pedraza attended that meeting with a five-year plan, am I right, Commissioner?
Correct, yes.
You know, so, I mean, this is, this is huge and, uh, again, we, we gotta do what we gotta do to make sure that we improve, make the improvements and make any changes that we need for future, uh, growth of our airport. So, thank you, guys.
I, I, I have a question. Yeah, just, I just have one, like, it's been almost forty years since we've done anything with this. How often, to the specialists, the authors? How often are we supposed to be up? How often are we supposed to be updating our ordinance, or what's your recommendation?
Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, I would recommend not forty years.
No, that, that's.
Generally, generally, we like, we think you should probably take a look at them about every five years. Usually you get into probably, as the industry changes, you'll get into about a ten-year cycle where you'll have to make any kind of meaningful changes to them. But a five-year review, just at a thirty-thousand-foot level, using aeronautical terms, um, is really recommended because that way you do, you keep pace with any FAA changes might have occurred, and if you have to do some minor tweaks and before you get yourself into trouble, it gives you a chance to kind of make sure you're proactively doing that.
Thank you.
Mr. Gosa, uh, for future purposes, we need to make sure that we start, you know, Mr. Andrew, that we start doing it every five years, you know, and not wait forty years. You know, I think it's.
You're hearing forty years from now?
We, we actually had made some changes a couple of years ago, but with litigation and things that are going on, we need professionals that do only this type of work to.
When we first attempted in twenty sixteen, we attempted to do it amongst ourselves. And that's why we opted out of that and seek to professionals within the aviation.
The very specialized area of law, and that's why you need gentlemen like these.
Well, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Dan is an aviation attorney, so he helped us with a lot of the legal requirements that we needed to meet, so.
Yes.
It was awesome to bring these guys on board, they did a tremendous job for us and getting us up to date to where we need to be.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Somu. Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lopez, second by Commissioner Pedraza to pass item P as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes, we move on to item Q.
Item Q, discussion and consideration to accept and file the quarterly investment report for period ending December thirty-first, two and twenty-three, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
Ms. Rosie.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. I respectfully submit the quarterly investment report for the period ending December thirty-first, two and twenty-three. Cash on deposit amounts have seen an increase as we see our ad valorem tax collections being deposited. We have moved about fifty percent of the amount in our PNC bank to our Lone Star National Bank as of January first, two and twenty-four. The interest earned continues to outpace projections. Total interest earned for fiscal year two and twenty-four is seven hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. General fund recognized two hundred thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars in interest on investments for the year. The remaining balance went to the respective capital project funds. Staff recommends acceptance and filings of these reports.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Rosie?
Somu.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pedraza and a second by Commissioner Lopez to approve item Q as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes, we move on to item R.
Item R, discussion consideration to accept and file the financial reports and audit it as of December thirty-first, two and twenty-three for the General Fund Water and Sewer Fund Solid Waste Fund and Airport Fund and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
Rosie.
Thank you. Gen- in the quarter ending December thirty-first, two and twenty-three, our general funds revenues collected were at nine point nine million, while expenditures were at seven point four, with an operating surplus of two point five million. Sales tax collected were three point five million, interest earned was at two hundred and one thousand, and the number of days remained strong at a hundred and thirty-five. And our fund balance is equal to forty percent of our current expenditures. Um, the water and wastewater has a positive change in fund balance of one point four million, a hundred and ninety days of working capital. Our bond, but keep in mind, our bond obligations are due February fifteenth and which will decrease the number of days. Um, sanitation had a positive change in fund balance of fifty thousand, eight, three hundred and eighty. They have sixty days of working capital, but the first quarter for sanitation is always heavy without full of cash due to the number of payments for the debt service, their leases and, um, because we, we, their leases for the, the sanitation vehicles and their, the equipment. Airport fund has a net change of one point four million, which is attributed to the sale of property, but the proceeds of that sale will be used to pay off a note payable to EDC. Um, staff recommends acceptance and filings of these reports.
On the days that you gave, like you, you said sixty days, thirty days, is that norm for most municipalities, or are we above average, below average?
Uh, the normal is ninety days. Uh, but we have our, but the city of Wasico has a fund balance of a hundred and twenty. Our fund bu- fa- fund balance policy requires us a hundred and twenty days, so we're above normal at this point.
Alright, and we're, we're in the positives, so that's all good.
Yes.
The, the airport fund, three hundred and seventy-eight?
The airport fund? Three hundred and seventy-eight because of the one point four million.
Okay.
Uh, but that is, usually the airport fund is, if you take out that, they are operating on a deficit.
Right, that, that's why I'm.
Yes.
I saw that and I was like, what?
Yeah, it's a little, it's a little, it throws it off, but, uh, after the first quarter of two and twenty-four, we'll, you'll, you'll see the, the reflection.
And with everything that we're gonna prove on the airport, we should see it in the positives.
Hopefully, hopefully with that m- updated master plan.
And we're paying back the EDC, Steve. Alrighty, do I have a motion?
Somu.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pedraza and a second by Commissioner Gonzalez to approve item R as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes, move on to item S.
Item S, discussion consideration to accept and file the annual financial audit of the Wester Economic Development Corporation and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission, I wanted to, to, as George is passing out the audit, a couple of things, a couple of points I wanted to point out. First of all, we continued with, uh, hiring the firm of Garcia and Peña. Uh, the reason we stayed with this company, even though we were, we had the opportunity to go out for bids, there was a couple of reasons. Number one, they already know our system, they know our budget, they know how we operate. And number two, uh, George was fairly new in the position, and we thought that, that to create fluency, we would have George, uh, uh, handle the audit through this company and at least that we'd have some, uh, staff fluency. Uh, in, in the report process, uh, one of the compliments, the first thing that Garcia and Peña did, that this is the best year that they've had in terms of reporting and collecting of documents, so the work that George did really helped them meet the deadline and to be able to come up with, uh, a great report. And of course, this is a great report that you see in front of you, there's, it's a healthy budget, healthy report, no flaws, and of course, uh, our goal was to meet your deadline. So George is here to, to go through the process with you, as many details as you like, I mean, he knows this book, uh, like the back of his hand, so if you have any questions, you'll feel free to answer, uh, right here, so I'll pass it over to George.
With the addition of the one point four, or what was it?
No, that's not reflected on this, that'll be next, uh, the next report. But, uh, thank you, Mr. Valdez, thank you, Mayor, uh, Mr. Commission, City Manager. Uh, so I, I also want to start off by thanking Rosie. Uh, Ms. Cabasos has been, uh, very receptive and, uh, responsive to all of my questions. This is my first time, so I counted, I, I bug her, and I know it's a stressful time, and, uh, thank you for taking the time to, to guide me through it. I, I was always, you know, asking about deadlines and the process, but I kind of, uh, tabbed the report a little bit, just so it could, uh, go a little bit faster. So, um, tab D or page D, that's the MDNA, uh, the Management Discussion and Analysis. And that pretty much summarizes or gives a narrative of what you're gonna see in page F, uh, which is numbers. Uh, but in two and twenty-three, the EDC increased its net position by over four million dollars. Uh, so to a total net position of twenty-two million, four hundred thirty-four thousand, three hundred thirty-five. It increased its revenues by three point six million and increased its expenses by six, uh, hundred and forty-four thousand, you know, so. Uh, it's always good to see a strong net position because it's a strong indicator of the fiscal responsibility of the EDC. So that's one thing that you're always trying to see is a trend in, uh, increasing, uh, your net position. And we, and later we'll, we'll see in a summary where we've increased our net position, uh, for the last five years. Uh, moving on to F, as, as you can see, some of the things that stick out are our current assets. They're sitting at close to thirty-three million, uh, but if you see, our long-term debt really increased from one point nine to twelve point six. Uh, and of course, that's it, uh, a- attributed to the Mid Valley International Industrial Park, so that's why you see that, that big bump. Uh, so the, as we drew from the line of credit that we have to fund that, uh, project, uh, it also increased our assets, but it, uh, obviously, it's gonna increase our liabilities as well. Uh, you'll see that, uh, the EDA grant is also there, accounted for in the capital grants at, uh, one point five. And of course, you'll see our increase in development services, so the, at the very bottom, you'll see the increase in the net position of four million, fifty-six thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars. If you move to tab one, uh, what you see is the comparison from two and twenty-two to two and twenty-three, and you'll, you'll see that, uh, in two and twenty-two, we pretty much kept cash in the bank and it wasn't generating any, uh, interest. So as, uh, Ms. Cabasos has said, you know, y'all are, uh, doing great with all the interest, uh, payments that y'all are receiving, we did the same thing. So we actually, uh, have five point two in CDs, and those earning interest rates are anywhere from four point five to five point oh nine, uh, percent. Our cash balance at Texas Regional as well is gaining interest, so we have, uh, almost nine million in assets gaining interest, uh, as of September thirtieth, uh, two and twenty-three. Uh, as you can see, the assets held for resale, you see in the land in two and twenty-two was valued at five point eight million, which was just the dirt. And that increased all the way up to eighteen point two six eight million. Uh, and that's because of all the infrastructure improvements that have gone on at the industrial park, so. Uh, it's pretty cool to see, uh, that asset grow. Uh, moving on to tab four. Tab four is a pretty basic, uh, balance sheet, so that just shows, uh, how our total assets are, uh, about thirty-two million and our total liabilities obviously, uh, equal thirty-two million as well. Tab six is, uh, more of a, a, a pretty standard, uh, statement of revenues and expenditures, and what you'll see there is, is, uh, a kind of a clearer picture, taking away those eleven million dollars from the line of credit. So, uh, you'll see that we still increased, uh, by one point six million from two and twenty-two to two and twenty-three, our total revenues at the top line. You'll also see that funding source, other funding sources for two and twenty-two were zero, and for two and twenty-three, we have the eleven point eight, which is the line of credit, uh, one point five, and then, uh, uh, an extra miscellaneous income of, uh, five hundred thousand. Uh, page twelve, which is the next tab, if you look at the bottom, uh, it's kind of just, uh, summarizing our investments. So as, as I mentioned, we have the investments of the Mid Valley International Industrial Park and also the investments of the CDs. So that's something new, as you can see, from two and twenty-two to two and twenty-three, it increased to about eighteen million in investments. And that's pretty much it, uh, page, uh, eighteen, it just, uh, shows our commitments and the record years that, the record year as far as paying, uh, the monetary incentives, so, I mean, uh, you can see we paid, the EDC paid almost three million dollars in incentives, which was a record year for the EDC. So we want to thank the city for all their, uh, contributions, the EDC leadership, uh, our, our, our executive director, our board of directors. They've done a great job of recruiting a lot of these, uh, new businesses and rightfully, our monetary incentives have grown to something that, uh, hasn't been seen before, so. This last sheet is just summarizing, uh, from two and nineteen all the way to two and twenty-three, so. It's a bonus sheet, this is not part of the, uh, financial statement report, but the, like I, like I mentioned before, we want to see that increase in net position and every year, uh, it, it, it increases, so. Um, that's something that the EDC is proud of. And with that, I'll hand it back to Mr. Valdez, I tried to go through it as fast as I could, and I'm sorry if I took longer than.
No, Mr. Valdez, thank you, man, for all your work and, and everything looks good, and it's like I said in the past when we meet, man, I, I, I trust that you guys are are doing what you gotta do for, for the EDC and your board, and not only that, but for the city of Wasico, so thank you for all your hard work and and I know numbers, working with numbers is, is not easy, I tell Ms. Rosie that all the time. It takes a special person, so, uh, thank you for your report, man, and thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you.
Well, as, as George said, thank you for the leadership as well, really, we're, we're, we're driven by the inspiration of you guys, by the appointees on our board. Uh, without that kind of direction, I don't think we'd be able to, to be as fiscally responsible. Uh, but we are working hard on both sides, we're both teams, and we work in unison together, so this is really a, a celebration of both, uh, both team efforts. So, thank you.
That's awesome, and.
Thank you.
Very appreciate you.
And Ms. Rosie, thank you for helping out as well and, and, and helping Mr. George. Alright, do I have a motion to approve?
Somu.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pedraza and a second by Commissioner Lopez to approve item S as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 All opposed, motion passes, we move on to item T.
Item T, discussion and consideration approving change order number four, pay application number twenty-one and final payment for the new downtown fire station number two as certified by the architect and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, Commission, this item, uh, will, change, the change order is gonna decrease the amount of the contract by twenty-four thousand, hold on. Twenty-four thousand, eighty-six dollars and fourteen cents. This is what remains of the owner's contingency fund and allowances and, uh, the various, uh, uh, items of the concrete rebar, structural steel and the CMU allowance reserves. And this is also the final payment, will still be holding on to the retained amount of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-one cents. Uh, staff recommends approval.
Do I have a motion?
Somu.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lopez and a second by Commissioner Farias to approve item T as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes, we move on to item U.
Item U, discussion and consideration of the swimming pool pro- project report and seek authorization to proceed with schematic design and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
Mayor, Commission, at the workshop we had on this topic, Sam Garcia presented, uh, his, uh, site analysis, expense analysis for the swimming pool project. That was, uh, the due diligence on his part that was due, uh, that he's been tasked to do at this time. The next step in the project would be to authorize him to proceed to schematic design, and that's up for your consideration today.
Yeah, with this project, I, I, I believe that, uh, you know, having upcoming, uh, work, or, or budget coming up in June, you know, we want to focus on our priorities and our needs, and, um, so I think we just, we should go ahead. And so I think we just, we should go ahead and do the budget, see where our, and list those priorities and needs that we have for the city and go from there. And I'm not saying that, you know, anything is going to happen. But, you know, we need to really prioritize our needs for the city of Westaco. So I think in this item, we can just take no action on and focus on our budgets and what's needed for the city of Westaco and what our priorities are, and we can go from there.
I totally agree. I think a few weeks back, we kind of saw where those needs are. When those guys were battling that water break out here and it took them longer than they expected. So, yeah, I think we need to do that, really scrutinize it.
You know, yeah, a lot of our needs are in our infrastructure. And that's what we want to focus on, our infrastructure for our city. And our city is growing tremendously and we want to make sure that we are able to sustain that growth. So, you know, we have to really prioritize our needs and make sure that we're doing our best to make sure that we accomplish that, you know. So on this item, I, you know, I want to take no action on and go through our budgets and see what we, and priorities and see where we can go from there. So with that, I'll go ahead and make a motion for, to break for executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's go to exec. It is 7:05.
Executive session. A, personnel, discussion regarding goals, objectives and evaluation of the city manager for the city of Westco was authorized by section 551.074 of Texas Government Code. B, real property, consultation with city attorney on the acquisition, sale, exchange, lease or value of real property located on 18th Street, West of Pleasant View Drive, described as being 12.16 acres of land out of a gross 14.82 acre tract of land out of farm tract, 706 West Track subdivision, Westco Dell County, Texas, as authorized by section 551.072 of Texas Local Government Code. C, real property, consultation with the city attorney regarding the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property legally described as a south 12.50 feet of lot three and lots four through nine, block 26, Westco Regional Townsite subdivision, Westco Dell County, Texas, as authorized by section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code. D, real property, consultation with the city attorney regarding the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property legally described as a west tract being an irregular tract of land out of N416, S435.45, E67, D1.78, FT53, 3.848, AC, Westco Dell County, Texas, as authorized by section 551.072 of Texas Government Code. E, legal consultation, consultation with the city attorney regarding lawsuit style cause number C043024, H Emmanuel Jimenez versus Fire and Police Civil Service Commission for the city of Westco is authorized by section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code. F, legal consultation, consultation with city attorney regarding claim number LB00000210212 from Valerie Krevle as authorized by section 551.071 of Texas Government Code.
It is eight o'clock and we are back from executive session.
Mayor, item B, recommendation that you give staff and the mayor authority to begin negotiations for possible purchase of real property as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pedraza and a second by Commissioner Lopez to approve item B as discussed in executive session. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
On item C, recommendation you authorize staff and the mayor to begin negotiations to acquire this property, real property as discussed in executive session.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lopez and a second by Commissioner Pedraza to approve item C as discussed in executive session. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All against, motion passes.
On item D, mayor, recommendation to authorize staff and the mayor to begin negotiations to acquire the real property as discussed in executive session.
No move.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lopez and a second by Commissioner Farias to approve item D as discussed in executive session. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
On item F, recommendation you authorize staff and the city attorney to settle this matter as discussed in executive session.
No move. Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pedraza and a second by Commissioner Lopez to approve item F as discussed in executive session. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I have a motion for adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn this meeting. All in favor?
Hold on, hold on. Did we do F? I'm sorry. Yes.
Yes, we did that.
Find the claim? Okay, no problem. Apologize.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Pedraza and a second by Commissioner Farias to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
Good night, guys.
The time is 8:01.
The time is 8:01. And this meeting has adjourned. Good night.